How many more headaches do you have?
Has a bad connection because I killed the power, I killed the power for the solar. So it's not the power that is bad.
You guys all.
Yeah.
You can't stop if you couldn't.
You do a crank and you get.
Excellent.
Uh, do you have any?
Yeah.
You go loose.
So I shut that off. Call the solar or the head. It's five. So. All of them. You got a ten hour. So. Well. Good thing you didn't. Yeah. Shout out to the. Cause then we're just. I don't know what. Thirty six. Kind of what our dollar are.
There were a couple.
Thirty six. Yeah. Right. Three.
Thirty six is like twelve or three.
Eight minutes.
Oh, five.
Six.
Oh, you're good. I've seen that. That's how.
Yeah.
Yeah. For me anyway, when we go in there and clean them, service them or softers or whatever else you go. You just have to. There's the. And you're. It's got. You can smell.
I know what it is. Right. So what it is. We started that solar panel, started pumping a lot of. So. I'm gonna do. I'm gonna. Like. And. Yeah. This is always. I. 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 The. Home. So. Now. What's out there? That's my second point is have people bragging and pulling.
Uh.
Recording in progress.
Good morning and welcome to Osceola County Committee of the Hall. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
Uh, I'd like to be added for Veteran Services to talk about the change of funding for the.
I've got, I have C under new business. Veteran Services changed. Change. Any other additions or additions to the agenda?
Well, she raised seven additions.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
A folks no. Brief public comment. Employ your board comments. Consider the approval of minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Move to accept minutes of February eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no. We have no old business, so let's move right into new business. Building a part-time assistant from that.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, two weeks ago, I was here to ask permission to host and fill part-time position for a permit tech. I wrote the new job description as twenty-four hours. It was approved. That was brought to me that it was not specified in the meeting that it was twenty-four hours because years ago that position was approved for eight. So I was putting that kind of again to come back and ask for approval of twenty-four or closing. So that's.
Just clarifying that it's not eight, it's twenty-four.
I'll make that. I did. I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Anderson Tech Company. Remote. Mr. Leffler.
We received the quote to have the audit done for twenty twenty-four. They would like to do it. They're asking to do the audit remotely this year, which would be a savings to us of a little bit of money, but we need to have the land bank added in, and I believe the land bank would be responsible to cover their own audit, but the audit for the land bank would be three thousand dollars. Total amount of the audit, including the three thousand dollar land bank, doing it remotely would be thirty-one thousand. So the counties portion would be twenty-eight thousand for twenty twenty-four, and the land bank would have a three thousand dollar bill and land bank. And again, that would be, they're asking to do it remotely. There is a little bit of cost savings to us and talking back and forth from Ken, it looks like it'd be a pretty seamless process to do it remotely, so that would be my recommendation, and I'm asking for approval to accept the quote from Anderson Tech Company for the twenty twenty-four audit.
Make that motion.
Second.
Does it ever look to other auditors?
Not at the time you're on it. I think county historically has used that and Anderson for a long, long time. If that's something you would like to see going forward, we definitely could put an RFP out for next year.
I'd sure like to see what's out there.
Yeah.
I, I definitely support Jim, as I think those audits should be called out and bid just, not just money wise, but the fact there's other people looking at it once in a while. And I apologize. And I'm also curious, you said there's some savings, how much is the savings? You knew I'd ask that, didn't you?
Three thousand dollars.
Three thousand.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no. Let's move on to Veteran Services strategy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Very recently, I was notified by Michigan Veterans Administration that there had been a recalculation of the FI twenty-five grant that caused them to reduce our funding through for the FI twenty-five grant cycle, which we are currently in. We started, of course, in October, so we're, the end of this month is halfway through. I had a meeting last week talking about with them, talking about the new funds that are going to reduce to us and ways that we can address those changes. Now, the changing in funding is primarily, they say, due to a recalculation to funds that they thought they were going to have, but they don't have. I'm not really sure. It's really uncharacteristic to be halfway through a grant cycle and they approved and awarded us monies a year ago, but now they're saying they can't get to us completely. All in all, when you look at how much we're going to reduce us, it's about twelve thousand four hundred dollars. So I worked on the budget and for amendment that has to be sent to them, showing that we have made those changes to reduce the funding of, or our budget for twelve thousand so dollars through, that's gonna match us through the end of September. So I have a budget amendment that I have prepared, provided a copy. I just, I would have sent it out before, but I just did this. I gave a copy to Commissioner Gregory, to Chair Gregory to look at. Basically, what it says is our funding was sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars, and they've been reduced now to fifty-six thousand to match that and so they could work. I had to look at things that weren't already contracted with, like some of our things like the UMR and stuff I can't change. Other things, of course, we spent a lot of money because we're halfway through it. So I looked at what we had left in there and what I was able to take away without directly affecting the services that we provide to veterans and Osceola County. So by doing so, I've reduced the funding by taking away a lot of advertising costs that we had yet to spend for this year, but by removing golf outing advertising, tails of wagon advertising, challenge coins, military booth expo, national accreditation training that they need to have in Louisville, instead of going down there, they're gonna complete it online for reduced cost. And with staffing, I was able to look at staffing, look ahead, and by reducing the number of hours of the VSOs put in the office by eight hours per, per week or sixteen hours per paid period, we're able to reduce funding down to the twelve thousand four hundred, I think. I don't exactly, because I have a worksheet made. Reduce funding of twelve thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents, which puts us at just six dollars under what they're giving us for the grant. So we're back under where we need to be. So those changes have been put into effect for payroll last week, and once the amendment is signed, we'll send it off to them. And just some of those things that we were going to do, we're not anymore. The things I didn't touch, of course, that we were committed to or that directly affect the veterans who are, I'd say on a personal level, is Meyer, Meyer cards, both food cards, one hundred and fifty dollar cards, and those are not touched. We're still doing twenty-five hundred dollars a piece on those. So five thousand dollars total there. Peacetime emergency grants for veterans for emergencies they had, I did not reduce. Advertising for the billboard, I wasn't able to reduce because we have contracts through them. Gas cards I did not reduce for the veterans. Staff training, I had to keep where it's at because of the minimum training they had to have, which was pre-set up with the budget. So those areas were not touched. So with that, by adjusting the spending in those different programs, and of course by our salary for our officers, we're able to cut that down. Next year, the funding probably will not include the extra funding, so when I'm doing the application and the budget this summer for next year, I'll have to keep that in mind. And obviously. Make some other changes, but luckily I want to do that today, that somebody's had to keep in mind.
Just looking for approval, signing the budget.
So.
Second. Discussion.
Where's that quick? Rick's full time or?
Nobody's full time.
But he's, but he's got the most dollars.
Uh, Rick has twenty-eight hours a week and so does Dave Frost.
So they're both down to twenty dollars.
They're, they're, well, eight hours total, so they're both down to twenty-four.
Both down to twenty-four.
That's correct.
So with Blanchard, you didn't touch him at all?
Blanchard, that's how they chose. I went there, I had a meeting with the three of them, and I said, how do you want to do this? And they literally mean Blanchard's kinda not here anymore, or they mean the latterly agree they'd rather take a couple hours off on Rick and Dave Frost's hours to, that we Blanchard's still there. That way we can maintain better coverage through the week.
Is there anything else that we could look at to give the future to where we could supplement that with other grants or something?
Well, with the veterans' grant, you can't. It's, that's why we gotta be careful. I have people sometimes ask us to take, if we could, you know, take donations, and you're only allowed to for so much. They're, it's kinda like COA and that, I mean, too, it's their grant. They're probably gonna knock it down next year to just the fifty thousand. And if we get just the fifty, why not give you that much? If it means that, to be honest with you, next year probably will mean that one of the veteran service officers will have to be like.
That's what we started out with, was fifty, wasn't it?
It's went up a little bit, but fifty is where it's been.
Fifty was where it started.
And it might stay there, but when you do the math for how much money they have for next year, you divide that by the number of counties that could apply for it, it's not.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Halliday. I recommended communicate within Michigan Community Action. I don't know if they have some veterans affairs. I love them. My name is Bill. And did Mike Tillman promote a contact?
No.
Okay. He's going to contact you. Moda has made a decision that they're gonna cut this medical, well, this transportation in half for all veterans, for veteran.
Okay.
Um, services, and they're looking to see if there's anything, again, through grants, that you might be able to supplement that so they would have no cost. And I believe it's like forty-five dollars an hour travel time, so it's reduced to twenty-two fifty currently. And they are also gonna communicate, we're gonna communicate with Michigan Community Action, just again, have money available for veterans.
Well, that'd be great. Anything, those are program funds, and that'd be great, couples. I mean, they come to us, come to them, and they ask for lots of things, and I'm so happy we're able to help them. I mean, our emergency funds, I think is one of the greatest things we're able to do, help them anything from, from, from medical bill to vehicle problem to home issues. I wish it was much, much more. We could use a lot more than eight thousand a year, but that's just what they give us, unfortunately. But when it comes down to it, if they reduce our funds, and they are happy, and if they reduce them even more, planning ahead, I just gotta look to see the least impact on the clients and the veterans. And the least impact on that is not taking away any program funds. Advertising funds, sure. But program funds, I mean, not as much. I don't wanna reduce hours tons because if no one's in the office and they can't get the service that way, so that's, that's the two most important.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no. Any other business? Extended public comment. All right. Let's go ahead and do our board liaison reports, since we're very timely today. Commissioner.
Yes. Well, I just shared to Moda as far as veterans assistance for rights, the wellness. And another thing Moda did, and I'd like to give a shout out to our mechanic, Nick. He does an outstanding job, keeps the fleet running. He recommended that we purchase light or low mileage used vehicles. Board agreed to do that, and, and they came up with three new, I shouldn't say new, like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. They're the year that, they're really good vehicles historically, and they had like less than twenty thousand miles. They had been used by a church, and they purchased them at half the cost of what the new ones would have been. And that's gonna help the fleet. And again, community, public, whoever, if you think there's, if you're having problems with your Moda rides, because I know they're starting to get out in Osceola County more, if you're having issues, let me know, and I'll be your advocate. And we also just approved a survey, they'll be doing a survey in the next, within the next four or five months, to assess the needs of the Moda and Osceola, Acosta counties. There has been some discussion that Moda might take over Dollar Ride in Big Rapids personally. I, I'm not too sure I'm for that because I'm for the residents of Osceola County, and I don't want any of our services being diminished. But that survey will occur, and it may, may tell us that we need a new facility out here by Hershey, from a US tenant or something, that more local, Dos Hill County. But that's, that's only other than that, trying to do trips up on the ski hill. I didn't do much other than that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Allison.
Well, I've been a state, so I really don't have a whole lot to report this meeting.
All right, very good. Commissioner Costner.
The only thing I got, I got never contacted.
Mr. State.
On the nineteenth of February, Mr. Ladd and myself, we watched an, or a webinar on the MMP financial aspect of how exactly we're gonna get this whole program paid for, because all the counties that are, well, I'm very adamant about, we don't have the funding to be supporting this recycling program. That was very informative. Twenty-first, we went to, Mr. Ladd and myself went to Isabella County, they hosted, Eagle was there, went over a few things, we were kinda slow walking us a little bit. Eagle did share the funding is available, but it was shared with us that the department head of Eagle has determined that he basically wants to look at every, every plan that is presented to him from all the counties involved, which is really kind of impossible. The funding's there. The problem is, is they now ask us to do all these other things that we have to do to get the funding. And we have to create an expense report for office hours that are used here for MMP, my time to go to the meetings, Mr. Ladd's time involved at the meetings, and it's just a whole bunch of hoops we have to jump through. Some of the other counties that are meeting with their local state representatives. The eighteenth of April eighteenth, that meeting is gonna be in Clare, and commissioners are all invited. I believe even the general public's invited to that meeting, or is it just? Yeah, it's open, because they have a facility up there to be able to hold it, so we'll bring some more information back on that, but the eighteenth in Clare, that meeting is gonna be open. If any of the commissioners or public wishes to attend to that, we can come to that. Eagle will be there, and hopefully we can get some answers to. Funding's available, it's just the things that they want us to do is really, to say the meeting was a little bit heated towards the end there is kind of an understatement. People stayed pretty well in control, but there's a lot of frustration that the funding's there and it should be made available so that we can get this processed though, so.
So this meeting opened to the public as well?
Yes, yes, it is. All the meetings are open to the public, so. But this one won't be, it's a personal invitation for the counties to bring the commissioners or anybody that has interest in this recycling program and the finances of it and all the other aspects of it, and it's gonna be a great big meeting. I think there's gonna be some state representation there, I'm sure, and so we'll, we'll, we'll share that as that becomes more available, so.
I heard, I heard Eagle might be sticking their nose in and taking over bureaucratically.
Well. The head of the Department of Eagle is really trying to be really hands-on, and the reality of it is, is the stuff is, all these, all the finances approved at the levels below him, but they still have to cross his desk to get approved, which is really almost physically impossible for him to review all these plans that are being presented to him. So hopefully there, I think what they're trying to feel is that they want, they're gonna put some pressure on through the legislative branch on him, somebody's gonna walk down the hall knocking on his doors, hey, man, what's going on? I got all these people calling me wanting to know why we're not releasing this funding, so that's kind of what I hope.
So this would be a good thing for the public getting involved.
Yeah.
Stay of interest.
Yes.
Because your voice is, would be really important to be heard.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Turner.
Um, not a whole lot for me. Village Marion has started a new wellhead protection program for their water system and asked the, be part of the committee, so we've started a couple meetings, and that's gonna be going for next several months to set up their next six to ten year plan of water development, so. I like that actually.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Meehan.
So I've been to several meetings lately. Couple of them were the planning commission and a couple of big takeaways. We've, we've been working on the bylaws and going over our, our goals for two thousand twenty-five. And we also had Katie Mora, she came in and we had a big discussion over the potash plant. And that was quite a discussion. But. We have another meeting coming up here to continue going through the, the draft policy to, to get through that, and then we can start formalizing the.
Master plan.
The whole master plan, yes. Yes, sir.
When is that coming up, Ross?
The next, the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what do we say?
March twentieth, one to four P M.
Yes.
And I'll be there.
Yes, if you're able to make that one happen, that'd be good to have your.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had a youth detention center board meeting, and they have several things they're doing. They're waiting on an audit to be compliant. They're waiting on several grants to come in because they had their budget cut. And the next meeting for that is April fourteenth. Reed City's city council is next week, and I'll be going with that. And the last meeting that I went to wasn't any, it was a long meeting, it was like three hours long, but we covered a lot of, a lot of different things, but I, I spent a lot of, a lot of time talking about it that is probably useless to anyone. But in saying that, also went to the area agency on aging, and we went over several things for their, their year. It was our annual board meeting, and they were talking about the care management and elder use prevention and their Medicare Medicaid assistance program. They gave you a bunch of flyers to bring back to Osceola and spread around to different areas, like the CIA and so like that, so. Had a lot of things on my plate over the last three weeks.
All right, very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
It's just business as usual, so I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Ladd.
So we've started the process of interviewing for Parks Director. We had two interviews last week, and we have. We had three interviews last week and we have another interview this afternoon. So hopefully we'll be able to make a decision on moving forward or putting somebody in place soon for that. You know, it is, there's really nothing to report on our going live with our broadcasting meetings. We're still waiting for Quinn's music to come in. I'm actually thinking of reaching out to see if I can find a different veteran to give us a quote, just to help speed the process up. This past week, last week, I was at Lansing for a couple days and attended the MMP May conference. We are gonna be starting our annual review here soon. Couple of things that came out of the conference. Currently, we are a pool member with MMP May and they're looking at making some changes based on the size of municipality. You may be moved out of the pool and move more towards self-funded. I'm not quite sure yet if Osceola County's gonna meet the, I guess, the size requirement to be pulled out of the pool, but they assure me that they're gonna be talking to us about that as we move forward with that. Currently, just the state of our insurance company, MMP May, they now service 69 of 83 counties in Michigan. Currently, they reported there's about six, or $465 million cash on hand for assets. Something catastrophic was to happen, so there's a pretty good amount of money for the membership. They had some substantial growth in the last year, I believe another 16 municipalities joined in. And, you know, the big thing that they keep stressing is cybersecurity. Seems like every time we have a meeting, there's been another municipality that's been attacked with ransomware, some type of cyber attack. So something that I guess we need to keep the focus on here at the county level. While I was at the conference, the treasurer reached out to me and at some point in time, and she wanted to comment on this, she knows more about it than I do, but we received a little bit of cash that was certainly counterfeit, that has been turned over to the sheriff's office for investigation. And I'm gonna be working with Tanya, she's put together a draft policy on, I guess, receiving cash. And, you know, reviewing that and put some safeguards in place to hopefully mitigate that from happening in the future, so. Did you want to add anything on that?
Just a correction, when the deposit was taken down to the bank and that counterfeit bill, it was a $1, $100 bill, was discovered, the bank capped it. It didn't get, the money didn't actually go to the sheriff's, our sheriff's department was informed and they are looking into it, but the bank actually capped that $100 bill. So, yeah. And just encourage all department heads, and we have, and Tim has, and they go around and give out markers as well to make sure everybody's checking their cash and that it's not coming up. And we did, we're testing a cash counter, counterfeit protection, I guess, machine in our office, so all cash, any cash that comes into our office is being mailed through that machine.
A follow-up on that, it just so happened I was here at our risk management conference and after learning what had happened with the counterfeit money, I started talking to a lot of other administrators in other municipalities and ironically, both places have a counterfeit money county detection machine, like what I'm still trying out purchasing, probably to put it in the treasurer's office, so. They're not that expensive and it sounds like you can use the tax funds to make the purchase, so.
So we, we, the system we have, equipment we have in our office right now is a used piece of equipment that still has lots of life on it, they told me, so, and it's $1,200, so that's the cost of it. Or just new, I think it would probably be closer to $3,000 to $4,000 depending on what machine it's in.
Little Michigan, just a reminder, we sent an email out, their annual breakfast is coming up, March 19th at Maryam. They sent everybody, all the board members a link, if you want to get a ticket. If you want me to sign you up for the ticket, let me know, I'm happy to do that. April 15th, Steve Curry, the executive director of MAC, will be attending the board meeting at 11 o'clock in the morning. Just to give an update on, I guess, legislative, where MAC's at, what they're involved in, so if you have questions on specific topics, start, start writing them down and Steve will be here to hopefully answer some of those questions. Patrick T. from Consumers reached out last night in an email, they're for grant opportunity. It's the Consumers Energy Foundation. Name of the grant is Put Your Town on the Map. First place will receive $25,000, second place is $15,000, third place is $10,000. Who's eligible, I'm just kind of reading here, so rural municipalities with populations less than 10,000 residents can apply. Candidates must be a 501(c)(3) tax exempt organization or a municipality. They can accept one application per community. Applicants might be chambers of commerce, downtown organizations, economic development groups, community organizations, or local community. All submissions are due by March 28th. And they will take the top 10 finalists to their small town and rural development conference up in, I think it's Traverse City, they're going to and pick the three winners, so. I guess spread that out if you would, and I can forward the email out to all of you too, so you have the information. I think I asked you, did this, did anybody from the county know anything last year, was that something?
Not this county, no.
I know you had a business receiving grant.
Yeah, we did fiber through that journey.
Can you print that out for me, Tim?
Yep.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send the city manager, let us do that, Tim?
Yeah, I'll, I'll print copies off to you the other day. So other than that, I think that's, I guess that's my.
All right, myself, I did attend the ACTA meeting. Wasn't very well attended. There was only three or four different townships that attended that meeting. I attended LAPT. And let's see, tomorrow I have Michigan Works. Other Monday is 9 on 1.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
I have not heard anything from Rose Lake Youth Camp. Has there been any updates to that, or is that something you can put on our agenda for next meeting?
As far as?
Well, was it kind of like with people coming through that were camping and not paying?
I think the contract that the board commissioners actually signed with the youth camp, I think that needs to be addressed at PNA to look at it first, to bring back recommendation on that contract. And I haven't heard if they're actually doing a youth camp this summer or not. I know last year they weren't able to provide any youth camp services because they couldn't find that. And they didn't want it to be that way, but if they can't find people to staff the park or the camp, then it made it very difficult. So I think we'll be reaching out to them, the people in charge of the youth camp, to find out what their intentions are again for this year. And then we should be able to bring you back contact from that.
So I would expect to see that.
Yes, I would hope so, yeah. And I think some of that issue is probably gonna be a little less of an issue now that the county is overseeing the Parks versus the Parks Commission. All right. If there isn't anything else, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move.
All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you everyone.